We're going to get started. Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Sparta Township Planning Board. I'd like to call this meeting to order. For the record, this meeting is being held on September 6th, 2023 at 7:05 PM at the Sparta Township Municipal Building located at 65 Main Street, Sparta, New Jersey. And a live stream can be viewed on YouTube at www.youtube.com/spartatwp. Please note that adequate public notice of this meeting was given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Let's begin with a salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dory, please call the roll.
Councilman Dean Blumetti.
Here.
Jeanette Burke.
Here.
Vice Chairman Ron Day.
Here.
Christine Dunbar.
Here.
Bill Enright. Justin Canelas.
Here.
Angela Cassie. Chairwoman Celeste Luciano.
Here.
Ernest Ragstad. Peter Ski. Mike Celestra.
Thank you. So please note that there are a few changes to tonight's agenda. First, there will be no approval of minutes this evening as both Mr. Ski and Mr. Sylvester are not in attendance. Also, the public hearing for PB number 707, O N V One Holdings LLC for One North Village Boulevard will be heard as the last item for tonight's meeting. So we're beginning with the resolution for PB number 699, Sparta Land Company LLC, 401 Houses Corner Road, Block 17001, Lot 5, site plan as it relates to their sign. Mr. Collins?
Yes, if a board member would make it, it'd be a motion to approve the memorializing resolution in the matter of Sparta Land Company LLC.
Is there such a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for PB 699, Sparta Land Company.
There a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Dean Blumetti.
Yes.
Jeanette Burke.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Ron Day.
Yes.
Christine Dunbar.
Yes.
Justin Canelas.
Yes.
Chairwoman Celeste Luciano.
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Okay, so let's move forward with the town council update. Councilman Blumetti?
Yep, thank you Chairwoman. I have an update. This is for the August 22nd meeting. There was discussion on the food truck ordinance that is in the works. It was introduced. It was discussed in great detail and developed further during the meeting. It will be reintroduced again. That was ordinance 23-16. Also ordinance 23-18 was heard and approved by the council, and that was for a key lockbox emergency access system. So the ordinance will require all commercial buildings that have fire or alarm systems, and there's detailed stipulations about which ones, to have a lockbox on the outside of the building to be used by emergency personnel in the case of a fire or other situation that requires them to have access to the building. The fire department chief and the fire marshal were both there present, and they spoke about the benefits of it. And that was passed, so it will be taken into effect. It is a phased-in approach, so it's not effective for all properties immediately, but it does affect certain buildings, and as they get approved for changes, they will have to meet that requirement, and also there's a time limit overriding that as well. And that concludes my update. Thank you.
Ms. Dunbar, if you wouldn't mind providing the environmental commission's update, please.
Yes, our previous environmental commission meeting was canceled, and I have no report at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Day, if you wouldn't mind, subcommittee update?
Okay, the ordinance subcommittee is scheduled to meet on September 19th. We will begin discussions on the AD zone and the PDRM1 zone. The Minor Site Plan Subcommittee, we had a quick meeting tonight. We've got about, I think to date we've received 40 different applications for the year. We have five that are pending still. Everything else has been decided. Question I had maybe from Mr. Collins could help us out here is, so two of them have been outstanding for a while. We're not getting any type of feedback from the applicants. So can we just notify them that if we don't hear back by a certain date, we'll close it? Or how do we close those?
That would be a good idea. They have to get you the information. If they didn't, you might as well let them, you know, give them maybe 21 days to get you information, and otherwise it'll be deemed withdrawn.
Okay, thank you. And that's it.
Okay. Does any other member of the board have any other board business before I start on my issues?
You can certainly cover plan endorsement. Sure. As many of you know, the Plan Endorsement Advisory Committee will have its first meeting on September 11th, which is Monday. That is in reference to the town center area being endorsed, considered a New Jersey state plan endorsed town center. That process had begun a while ago. It's ongoing, and now this committee will take that back up again and proceed forward with visioning and other aspects of the plan endorsement application. And that committee includes members of the planning board, environmental commission, several residents, et cetera. So that's going to be starting again on September 11th. Thank you.
Any other board business? Okay, I will move into my items. So as previously mentioned in other meetings, there's going to be a subcommittee formed for the master plan. That subcommittee will include members of the public. We currently have posted a direct link to the planning board's website for the volunteer application. However, the application window will not open until September 13th and will continue for 10 days through September 22nd. Depending upon the volume of applicants, we're hoping to have the subcommittee members appointed and named at the October 4th meeting. Please note if an application is received prior to September 13th or subsequent to September 22nd, it will not be considered. So please be attentive to the application window. And relative to master plan updates, as Councilman Blumetti just mentioned, we have the Plan Endorsement Subcommittee that's having its kickoff meeting on September 11th. And like the presentations from the Highlands Council and the Land Use Conservancy, this will lean heavily into the direction that the master plan takes. We're also investigating what would be needed to review the planned areas of Sparta to see how closely they conform to the Highlands Council's regional master plan, which would also be a large step forward in the reworking of Sparta's master plan. Moving on to my next item regarding the professional search update. The bid period closed on Friday, August 25th, and the submissions have been sent for attorney completeness review. At this time, there are 10 submissions totaled, including current professionals. We're hoping the attorney review will be concluded within the next two weeks, at which time the information will be provided to the planning board's subcommittee, which consists of Councilman Blumetti, Bill Enright, Ernie Ragstad, and myself for our assessment. Final candidates will then be presented to the remainder of the board for their review and potential interview. That is all I have for other board business. Are there any questions from the dais regarding anything I've discussed?
No, I just had a different question. Other board business, just an update request.
Sure.
Have we heard back at all from the Wilson family with respect to doing a concept?
The Wilson family has asked that we hear them on October 18th. And last I heard that that, so yeah, I believe it's confirmed for October 18th. That was the last that I heard because they just received back an email saying that they would be willing to extend their verbal agreement with the council.
That's my next question.
Yeah.
We'll have to watch that 60 days.
Right, yeah, no, right. They were willing to extend their verbal agreement with the council until such time as the conversation's concluded.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so we will move into the open to the public for matters not on the agenda or related to a hearing.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board. My name is John Urson. I represent the applicant tonight on the application, O N V One Holdings LLC. Madam Chairwoman, we're going to request that our application be carried. We're going to request that it be carried to the first meeting in October, if that's possible. We received the planner's report yesterday. It was very comprehensive. We'd like an opportunity to be able to reply. And just this afternoon, near the end of business, we received a memo from the police department with some traffic concerns. We'd like to talk to them and meet with them to see if something can be addressed in their opinion. And we think it's important and proper to do those things in advance of the hearing so as not to waste the board's time trying to solve a problem in live time. And we're aware that Mr. Brady came for this application tonight. We're fine paying, you know, his fees, you know, for attending and whatever the time would have been. So that's our request. I thought I would make it now so the board was aware if that's okay.
That's Mr. Collins?
So really Dave Brady should address this to the board because I'm recusing.
Right, because you're accused, exactly. So Mr. Brady?
He's here and he can help you.
I'll just stay where I am, Madam Chairwoman.
If you wouldn't mind stepping to the microphone so that everyone on the live stream can hear you.
So everybody, I introduce myself to the Chairwoman, and I know Dave Simmons very well, David Brady, Firma Brady, and Corey Al. I've been covering for Tom on all the North Village applications because of a conflict. I don't know what the meeting, what date the meeting is in October, but I'd like to check that before we set that date, make sure I don't end up with like three meetings in one night or something.
That meeting date would be the 4th, but I'm not exactly sure of what the current scheduling would be for that particular meeting.
I'm good that evening, so I have no problem with my calendar. And from a point of view of procedure for the board, applicants who take time to get their application better prepared rather than dealing with issues in the public setting is a more efficient way to go. So I don't see any reason why, from my point of view, I don't see any reason why there should be a problem with this.
I appreciate the offer and the consideration as well from the applicant. I would just say we probably can't commit tonight to whether it's going to be, what meeting will be, but-
Right, that's the unfortunate circumstances that we, at this point, don't really have an idea of what's going to be on that agenda, and we want to be able to give you due time and do, you know, since you're going through that process.
As long as it's carried with notice, we can be in touch with Dory.
Okay, that's preferable.
I'll call you after your couple calls.
Okay.
Then, Madam Chairwoman, we should make sure we announce for the record and for anybody who's here that it's being carried, make sure I get this right, to October 4th at 7 o'clock in the same location.
Being carried, date to be determined.
Okay, well, we need to give it a date tonight.
Okay.
It can always be adjourned again, but we need to give it a definitive date tonight in order to carry it without any further notice.
Okay, perfect. So then the announcement is that it's October 4th, okay.
Okay.
All right, perfect.
I will see you then.
Thank you.
Okay.
I apologize for the inconvenience, but I appreciate the board's consideration.
Not a problem, and we, again, as Councilman Blumetti had stated, we do appreciate the consideration.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Jenny Derrick's tapping to Sparta. The questions pertain to an item you just discussed briefly, the Wilson PCED question. First, if I might ask you, Ron, since you were on the subcommittee, the subcommittee discussed the deed restrictions that are on the Wilson property as part of your deep dive into that zone.
I can't even answer that, but I'll go back and look at my notes. There were a lot of things were discussed, and I just don't, I don't remember to be honest.
But there is a deed restriction, right, Mr. Collins?
There's a plat restriction, I think. Same thing as a deed restriction, and I believe Mr. Simmons did explain the subdivision plat to the board, to the subcommittee, and I believe he talked about the restriction and has to do, I think it has to do, Dave maybe could answer detailed questions. There are three lots, and the three lots are separated by a right-of-way to the traffic light, Route 15. So, and then they are required to use that for access.
Well, no, actually, the deed restriction that I'm referring to, which I believe is dated from 2007, requires that, it basically puts the township in line. It says that they are a third-party beneficiary, and as such, the property cannot be transferred without planning board approval. It says one or more to any third party without prior plan or general development approval, planned development by Sparta, and these restrictions are transferable to Sparta as a third-party beneficiary.
I'd have to read that more to be able to remember it or explain it.
I think from a subcommittee perspective, I don't remember having those type of discussions unless anyone else, like I said, here does.
It makes sense because the property is in what's called a planned development zone, planned CED zone, and there was a first application for the subdivision of those three lots. So it relates, and I believe the subdivision might have been 2006, but Dave could try to find the plat. And so if you imagine that the whole property has to be developed in accordance with a planned development scheme, even if people buy one lot, they are subject to the overall plan. So without going into great depth, I don't know that this matters that much, but that's, whatever is recorded is of record.
Okay, I was just curious, what makes this of particular, because there's another reference, one of the first references says that because of the, I'm sorry, the language is leaving me, but because of the overwhelming interest of the town, they have basically a seat at the table when this deed is looking to be transferred. So then that kind of negates my next question, is what is the interest of the town? And then further, what impact does the deed restriction have on the Wilsons' ability to develop or sell the property? What impact does that have overall? And how does that then relate to the negotiations or the discussions that you're having with the Wilsons in terms of what they want the PCED to look like?
So in terms of the subcommittee work going forward, there will be no discussions with the Wilsons. That will be done here at the planning board.
Okay, well, with whomever is going to have the discussion, that seems to be an important piece of the puzzle. I'm not-
Right, okay, so the discussion is based on what they would like to see done with the property, and they're going to give us information in terms of what they would like or how they would like it treated. That doesn't mean that any action needs to be taken on behalf of the board in, with regard to what they say. It's just if-
I understand that, but if you're going to have discussions with the developer, you'd like to know the full picture before you get into discussions, or that could result in some type of negotiation for what that lot, for that zone looks like.
Well, since we're not, we're not at any point capable of negotiating with them regarding any potential sale, that would be a council issue.
Well, no, the deed restriction specifically says that the planning board has to approve anybody that, anybody that's going to purchase the property. And so my question is then-
So Jenna, without you providing a copy to the board and to me and Dave to read, I said before, I'd have to read it to get more detail.
I have a copy. It's not a good one, but I have a copy here.
Yeah, I'm not going to do it in five minutes.
I'm not asking you to. You just asked me to provide a copy.
Thank you for sharing that with us, and deed restrictions generally-
Actually, Jenna, could you please get a copy of that to Dory so that she can, she can take care of it accordingly so that we can, we can review it? That would be very helpful. Thank you.
But generally speaking, deed restrictions are different than zoning, and they are generally speaking enforceable forever until there are parties who control the deed restriction agree to change them. They can be in addition to zoning, and they, and being a third-party beneficiary is a common procedure for deed restrictions that are enforceable by a township or a board.
What, can you tell me what that means? I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Sure, I'd be glad to. Their party beneficiary just means that although not a party to the deed, the party named as a third-party beneficiary has the authority equal to a party because they are deemed to have the benefits of the restriction and therefore the right to enforce it, even though not necessarily a party to the deed. So it doesn't mean that you own the property.
No.
No, but it does mean you have the right to enforce a restriction that is a real property restriction, but without, so I think it might relate to this subject that I said before, which is the property is in a planned development zone, and planned developments are interesting and helpful as a design technique that municipalities use and the municipal land use law authorizes because they allow for making sure that any subsequent purchasers comply with the same design theme that gets approved in the overall plan. But you can certainly raise that on October 18th, and if you give a copy to the board, we'd be glad to read it, and maybe it will come up in that meeting because the property owners are subject to deed restrictions and they almost always comply with them.
So Tom, can I have some clarification here? Even though that deed restriction would be pertinent to the Wilsons' portion of the PCED zone, it is not relative to the entirety of the PCED zone?
Probably not, although I'd have to see it to know. And they did own a lot of the, they owned some land, they did own, I think, a warehouse next door to the three lots. So there may be, I don't, I don't know the answer.
Okay, so when we get the copy, we'll be able to discuss it.
I think what, the thing to remember, and I think Jenna's pointing out, that deed restrictions are in addition to zoning, and they are enforceable even if the zoning is changed.
Okay, great. So this way, once we get, once we get a copy, we can have a more intelligent conversation. Okay, perfect.
I'm Rick, Rick Finkel, 13 Hayward Road, Sparta. Just following this conversation, I don't have all the details, and I know we were speaking in general terms, since some people haven't seen this deed restriction, but after the board has a chance to review it and discuss it, can you sort of present back to the public what it means specific to that piece of property?
Right, well, we're actually, we're charged with speaking to the family on the 18th, so we're going to see what we can do in terms of information gathering on the entirety of their portion of the property so that we can, we can have that conversation intelligently. I'm sure it'll come up again in our October 4th open public portion, and the October 18th meeting is open to the public, so we're hoping that the public will be here. Ask your questions of the family and really kind of get as much out there to everyone who's concerned about this space as possible.
Yeah, I'll try to attend that meeting. I'm asking if the board, instead of us asking the family, if the board is going to present to the public some-
We don't, we don't make a presentation, Mr. Finkel, but we will have a copy of that by then, and we'll be able to explain it if it comes up.
Okay, but you're talking about general terms, and you haven't seen it. I guess my question is, without a presentation, without a formal presentation-
We don't make a formal presentation.
Can you clarify?
The board doesn't do a formal presentation, but the board will be able to review this deed restriction, also the plat of the subdivision of the property that exists, and hear the applicant, and then ask questions of the applicant. And by that time, we will be able to have summarized and understand the details of the restriction that Jen is reading from.
We can certainly have the deed restriction first date as part of, as part of our documentation, absolutely. That can be posted to the website.
Okay, but if there's not a presentation, it's fair to ask clarifying questions based on the professionals seeing it with more detail?
Absolutely, that's the point of the conversation, is to have those clarifying, that clarifying conversation, all those questions.
Thank you.
Just for clarity's sake too, I'd like to add that, just as a reminder to everyone, the work that we're doing to look at these zones is focused on the zone. We're not necessarily focusing on properties, just to remind everyone, it's not a specific focus on those three lots. Just happens to be, those are three open lots, but we're, the focus of all this work to re-look at zones is to look at the actual zone itself in its entirety.
Right, but you are meeting with the Wilsons. I understand that the invitation went out to everybody, but it's specifically because of the Wilson concerns that you're having these additional meetings.
Yeah, meetings, right, you're right, Jen. It's meetings here publicly, planning board meetings, it's not anything behind closed doors, yeah. Yeah, and it's to seek their input. We've, there's been no commitment that we're going to change anything, or, you know, it's just to hear at every spec, yeah.
Hi, Mike Devine Oak Parkway. Is this the public session now?
Yes, it is.
De facto, I guess. The application was withdrawn, was that the drive-through restaurant in North Village? People left a little while ago. I don't know what their application was for. Yes?
Yeah.
It's for a commercial property in North Village.
Okay, yeah.
Are we allowed to discuss that or not, since it's not on the agenda?
It is, it is no longer on the agenda, and we are not at liberty to discuss an application outside of its hearing. So you can make comment, but we cannot respond.
Okay. I guess my comment would be that since I assume all the zoning, permitted uses, and everything else are well-defined for that area, that we're pretty much locked in as far as the criteria that we can use to assess, approve, or reject that application. I know you can't respond, so I'm kind of curious as to what the police report and what other reports are looking at, if they can actually have any impact on the application, since apparently it's already locked in with existing statute. I don't know. I guess I was going to try to discuss that, but since you can't respond, I'll just leave it as a comment. Second, and I don't know if anybody else intends to bring this up, but there were some troubling things I read in a recent Tap into Sparta article, whether that can be discussed, whether it's a council issue, or since it relates to litigation, it can't be discussed. I don't know if you're, no one I'm referring to, but there's talk about potential settlements, there was talk about other things, and it looked like maybe there was not the optimal communication among the professionals and the town staff and maybe the planning board. I mean, are you allowed to respond to this, or do you understand what?
We should not, Mike, respond to discussions of that matter as litigation.
Okay, I understand. The last thing, and I didn't come really prepared to discuss this, but I have the general feeling that there's four or five pretty critical things that we're going down the path on, pulling the strings, so to speak. I don't get the feeling that there is a sufficient sense of urgency, that we might be overcome by events if we don't maybe lock some of these things or get them at least on a defined path. I know the master plan is critical for a number of obvious reasons. Occasionally, we talk about things that could be input to the master plan, but I don't see those inputs being really pursued. For a while now, we've heard about the Highlands having grants available for things that could be of value. I haven't really seen any action to get underway with any of them, perhaps I'm just unaware of it. I sense there are other properties kind of near the so-called cornfield that could be at risk, that people could come in with applications. I'm not sure if there's anything in place to really address that or anticipate it. So without trying to go through a list of things, I guess, and this is not a criticism, it's just a genuine question. Are you comfortable that we have our arms around all these things and we're moving collectively in a direction that's going to keep us ahead of the curve, so to speak?
I can say with the utmost confidence that this board is doing absolutely everything it can within its power to do, to be capable of moving things as fast as we are capable of making them move. We are a body that is beholden to a lot of other moving parts. There's a large bureaucracy here that we have to jump hurdles. So even though I believe that we've truly leapt our own hurdles in terms of learning curve in the short time that we've been here, we've also pushed forward in a great many areas, and a master plan, which was something that we weren't even thinking that was going to be possible potentially this year, we're already in the process of putting together the subcommittee. In terms of other areas, yes, there are feelers out looking for grant money, looking for other, other information. I mean, we, again, scheduling is also an issue, so when it comes to presentations and meetings and so on, and us being volunteers, trust me, I promise you, we are doing absolutely everything we can do as fast as we can humanly do it.
I really appreciate that, and I've been on your side of the table, so I understand the complications. I've also had a little bit of experience of pushing big bureaucracies, and I know how that goes, so just be aware that the public, I think, is keenly aware, keenly attentive to what you're doing.
I am acutely aware.
Acutely aware, and we are acutely interested in-
And I, and I actually welcome that interest. I want that interest. I would love to see these seats filled. I say at almost every meeting, and to almost every person that I speak to, I would love to see this room filled. I would love to see us in the thousands of hits for our live stream as opposed to the hundreds. I would love the community's involvement. I want to hear the voices. As soon as they present themselves to me, I can address the questions they have.
Okay, now, I have to say, being very frank, the level of dialogue in this planning board is frankly, I think, a higher level than I've seen in quite a while, so that's encouraging to me. I do think that- I do think that, and begin being real frank, I come to these meetings and council too. I come to the meeting, I hear something, so yeah, we heard about that three weeks ago. What's ever happened? So I understand everything you said, and I appreciate it, but just please take away from me encouragement and support and interest in what you're doing, and if there's anything I could do for whatever, I'd be more than happy, and I'm sure many people feel that way.
I appreciate that, and feel free to put in an application for the master plan subcommittee.
Whenever I put an application, it gets denied because I'm not qualified, so.
Thank you.
Two things. First of all, you mentioned that your ongoing search for an attorney is going on. What about a planner? Is that going on, ongoing now too?
The professional search is a joint search. It's not one versus the other.
Wonderful. And the other thing is, I am concerned about that rehab center that is right next to Starbucks. It's, it's right now. They don't have any outdoor, I mean, there weren't requirements put on them. I guess you couldn't put requirements, but it seems to me that even our federal prisons have space for people to be outside. They're enclosed with fences, of course, in federal prisons, but there, if someone is in rehab for several weeks, there's no way they can get outside there. They don't have a patio. They don't have any space at all. And it just seems to me that cooping someone up for months at a time without wheeling the wheelchair out to get fresh air is worse than a prison, and no one seems to notice that. And, and the only area that could be used is this area that they're talking about building a fast food place on, and it should be brought up to the people who have that rehab center, that they should be speaking out and getting some land there for their people that are stuck there. I was, several years ago, I was in a rehab, and I wheeled my wheelchair outside every day, and I could sit next to a pond with trees and flowers and everything, and it lifted my spirits. And, and we care about our prisoners, so it can't, we think about, what about somebody who, like I did, I broke a hip, so I, that shouldn't condemn me for weeks on end not to be able to get out. They don't have any outdoor balconies. There's no way. I, I can't imagine that a plan like that went through, and now they're going to build a fast food right up against there? That is even worse. With the, with the fumes as the cars are parked and coming out, will they be able to even open a window with, with the exhaust from the cars in line? And is there no protection planned for them anyway? Please consider it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
All right. Sorry.
No worries.
Again. A different, Jenny Derrick's tapped into Sparta. Curious, when I was doing some research on this application, what is a transect? I could not find the information about what a transect is. There were a couple of limited commercial transects in T5 and T6, but couldn't find what a transect is.
Are we speaking about the application that was supposed to be heard this evening?
I'm talking in general what the language is for the ordinance that has to do with the PCD zone.
The definition of those transects can be found in our ordinance. Let me see if I can quickly give you the sections, but 18-4.34 brings you onto the PVC district zone, and then within that section, there's going to be a description of the transects, I believe, that you're interested in reading. And what they are essentially is, again, it's a planned development, as Mr. Collins mentioned before, and it was built out over a number of years. You could do certain activities, certain uses, depending on what part of the planned development that you are located in.
Okay.
And there's a map that'll break down where the transects are, and then there's a further portion of the ordinance that says you can do this in transect 5, this in transect 6, and so on.
Right. That's where I was running into some confusion. The other question I had is SMART code. It references SMART code. The information can be found in SMART code. I'm not, I couldn't find it. I'm sorry to take up your time, but I'm just trying to be able to get the information for myself so that I don't have to stand up here.
That's okay. I'd be happy to help. I need a little bit more information on the SMART code.
In the definition of transect within the township ordinances, it references as referenced in SMART code.
I'd have to read the whole section.
Okay.
I don't know that off the top of my.
Okay. Thank you. That's okay.
But under the, under our zoning code, I know you have to, I know you have to dig a little bit.
Yep. Yep. That's what I've been doing.
Yeah, but the definition of the transects are there, and there's a map that shows where they are and breaks down what you can do in each, in each section.
Okay. The other question I had, and this is again a general question, relating to that area, the PCD zone overlays by the PVC zone, and when there are conflicting standards within those two zones, who wins? What is the authority?
Depends on the application. It depends on the type of applications coming in. Let's go with just a typical development that could be in any zone, zoned R something, okay? And then on top of it, there's an overlay zone. So the applicant most times has the opportunity to just ignore the overlay and just come in and move forward with an application under the underlying zoning, if they choose.
Okay.
Whatever that R, and I'm making this up.
Sure.
That, whatever that R permitted use is. Generally speaking, there's an overlay zone. Overlay zones are put on top of as an alternate zoning option in many cases, and I generalize that in many cases. And it, for whatever reason, like you want, if you're trying to incentivize somebody to come up with a planned unit of development, which in a planning world is looked upon much more favorably because you could see the whole puzzle at one piece, so they could come in under a planned development and give us the whole picture, and maybe only develop one or two pieces at a time of that whole picture. But again, that's an overlay that would sit on top of the underlying zoning, and the developer, the land, the developer has that option.
The developer has the option. Okay.
When you adopt, when you adopt an overlay zone, you're now adopting essentially two sets of zoning.
Right.
So you're giving them, here's the underlying base zoning, but a lot, most, in most cases, and I'm generalizing, the overlay zone is, now you're trying to incentivize, you're trying to create a better application, whatever it may be on any, any particular project. Maybe it's, you know, clustering and having more open space and, you know, and so forth. That's just one option.
One of the, one of the conflicts that I came up with is that the, one allows, just in, just in general bulk, standard of 40% impervious coverage and another 45, and then ultimately 60 for where this property is. So that was, that was interesting. And then conflicting permitted uses, PCD versus PVC, one does allow for a drive-through and one prohibits, expressly prohibits a drive-through. So that's where I was confused, when you have the two on top of the same lot, who wins?
It's, number one, it's up to an applicant to come in and make their case, and they have the right to come in under the underlying zoning or under the overlay zone.
Okay.
So it starts with the applicant, well, it starts with what the town adopts, so.
Sure.
Okay, we adopt the ordinances. So, but once we adopt them, the developer has that right of either coming in under two different options, and when he comes in with option B, let's just make it up, it's the, his burden of proof to demonstrate that he's complied with all the regulations on that overlay zone.
Okay.
And so if you have any questions with any application, not just the one talked about tonight, but any application, you know, it's a great question to always ask that applicant. It's always on the, it's the burden of the applicant to demonstrate compliance with whichever zone they're going with.
Sure. I appreciate your help. Thank you.
Jenny, one other, one other question, one other question, comment, and I do this at the risk of revealing my poor or strong research skills about transects. So I think, the way I understand it, is often they're used to transition gradually from one type of area to another. So for instance, if you have a very open space, rural, raw area, and then you have a inner city.
Right.
You will, you'll have maybe six stages or so of transition between those, going from, you know, each one will be a gradual, a little bit more towards the other extreme.
And that was noted, what you're exactly speaking about was noted.
Yeah. Like I think, I think in the, in some parts of town, I won't specifically say what, so in terms of, I won't talk about anything hearings, but in terms of certain developments, the rear section of certain developments are lower-density houses or properties, and as you move to another area of it, you might see a little closer proximity of housing, things like, so I think it's mainly for a transition.
Thank you. Okay. That having been said, since Ernie is not here and we don't have a, and we don't have executive session, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Okay. We are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.